Megan, Brian, Brooks.
Here.
Rob, Alyssa, Michael, Barb.
Here. Okay, um, I think Patrick had a change to the agenda.
Yes, so at the end, if we could have a brief discussion about highway signage. Everyone's favorite topic, signs.
And if we could, uh, when we state the motion, if we could state it saying amended to and then what it's including. Cause I, when I read minutes and it says amended, well, what was amended? Just a peculiarity of mine.
This is Brooks now, I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment to add highway signs at the end of the agenda.
Tote second.
Perfect, thanks. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, consent calendar. Bunch of plots, it looks like anything stick out to anybody?
I'd bring, I'll make a motion to approve. Tote second.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got the minutes.
Fast it all second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, public comments, anyone here for public comments? Lon, you got anything? Wow. Yeah. Oh, okay, he's waiting, he's waiting till the end, okay, alright. Hearing, uh, no need for public comments, we'll move into, oh. He got moved up to the head of the discussion, huh?
He will be here eventually, he said he was coming, so we're gonna have to start without him though.
Sure, we get, we move him up and then he's not here, okay, we'll go on to, um. Institutional district conditional uses, page twenty-nine.
So this is broken down into two ordinances, just because there is the state rule that an ordinance covers a single subject. We just wanted to have one for the cell tower section, and one for the institutional, just to make sure we are as compliant as we can be. So that's why they're two relating to somewhat of the same thing. So.
Well, do we want to deal with this then, since we haven't dealt with the cell tower discussion? Or does it matter? I mean, should we wait?
So, the, the first ordinance falls under the cell tower and the second one's the institutional. We can wait for him and move on to what's after that if you prefer, or we can start talking whichever you'd like. Yes, the second one does. The question there is how you want to treat on lot setbacks. As well, just because there is the graduated table based on height. And most cell towers are probably on the upper end of that table being the conditional use requirement. Whether you want to do that by conditional use, if you want us just set numbers for specifically four towers, however you wanted to do that, but based on. It's however you want to do the on lot setback, since there is the graduation table, graduated table. Cell towers are a bit different than a church or a school or a building, so. Just kind of a, something to nip a little bit there.
Okay, so what page are we on?
So the, the start of the cell tower stuff starts on page twenty-four of the packet.
Okay, thank you.
The first part of that ordinance talks about, eh, of course have to fix like the, the table of the, the words and the sections ahead of time. This is more or less just kind of roughing out an ordinance, what it would look like. Third-party review authorized, basically, cell towers are complicated. There, I do not have the expertise to know whether certain things comply based on the cell tower, whether it's the only feasible alternative or whether that's a significant gap in coverage, I would have no idea, I could look at the table and there's a color on it, great. So this is if, if we need help making that determination, we can hire an engineering firm to do it and the applicant pays for it. And that would apply to both a new request or any of the co-location and modification requests.
Well, that's a good point, Patrick, cause I wondered about that, you know, we're, we're hearing from one applicant. And I don't know anything about this stuff, is, i- is his information accurate? I don't, I don't know, if another, if it wasn't Verizon seeking this and somebody else came in, would they have the same concerns? I mean, how do we feel about that?
And based on what we charge for our conditional use permit application, my guess is if we had to hire an engineering firm, it would be more than the fee we charge. So, we don't want to go broke working through applications.
Right.
So then it moves on to fifteen fifteen seven C three. It, A includes the one point one times language, and there were a couple of language areas we talked about last time, so I tried to incorporate that. Twenty-seven, on page twenty-seven at the bottom, the language is somewhat new. The city, the city administrator and I were talking, some cities have this, others don't. We're just trying to figure out whether this is, I guess allowable or not, basically, we can't regulate RF emissions. The FCC does that. Whether we can impose the requirement that it be tested periodically or annually or whatever, just to make sure they are meeting FCC standards. We're not regulating, we're just ensuring compliance. I don't know if that's something we can do, it's just something thrown out there for thought. That's the part I would have to look into, I imagine they do, I just don't know what their requirements are there, which, I imagine if we do, if, if they do, great. I mean, we would probably like to just get the thumbs up from the FCC that they're still good, but. It sounds like you had some other throw out comments, and I do as well.
We're on page twenty-seven.
We're working through it, your top's on the agenda.
He moved you up. Yeah?
Yeah, get you in and out of here, hopefully you'll have some.
A comment as far as the test? I think you had mentioned something about, you know, those, they can come in and, they, they all approach it differently.
Twenty-seven is kind of where it starts.
Uh, no, sorry, it was, um, uh, the third-party review. It, it says something about providers use various methodologies and analysis to, to determine the need for a tower. I, I would imagine them doing, them doing their testing and us doing our testing is both going to be expensive. Because like you said, as soon as you get an engineer involved, um, you know, the costs rise. I guess to me, if, if the city wants to do a third-party review, um, I would think it would be in the best interest to state what methodology the city would use. And then that way, if the applicant uses that methodology, um, then we would, they wouldn't have to pay twice. They wouldn't have to do it themselves and then pay the city to have someone do it in, in another methodology. And then, and then the information could come in and we, the city could hire somebody just to review the information, cause like you said, we wouldn't, we wouldn't know how to, how to analyze it, but. If we could just require that information in a, in a pre-ass, pre-established format. And then the city could hire an expert to just review and confirm the information. To me, it's a little bit ambiguous, um, that the applicant wouldn't, wouldn't know what to, what to submit and whether it would be acceptable or not. And they wouldn't know what the cost would be for the city to review it. It's kind of a, kind of, in my mind, it's too much of an unknown. And so I don't know if there's any standards out there that, um, that they would understand and be able to comply with.
You want to give us your name and address again and then see if you can help us on that?
Yeah, so I'm Jonas Snyder, address is five three one three Southeast Wind Avenue, Sioux Falls. Sounds like we're just having some discussion around, uh, RF emissions and how, how to monitor for those and, and evaluate those ahead of construction. Is that kind of what the discussion's around?
So this particular section is the, if you have to prove that, you know, the only feasible alternative, you have a significant gap in coverage, that. This, this is, we, the city can hire a third party to help us determine if that is correct. Is there a methodology commonly used in the industry to render that determination, or is it just kind of a crap shoot that there are a hundred different ways to do it and everyone does it all differently?
Okay, I think I, I think I was first thinking about RF emissions, which is a slightly different thing from RF, I'd call an RF propagation. So an RF propagation study is what you would, you would commission an engineer to do, to basically identify where gaps in coverage are. And those are, yeah, there's, there's industry standards for that, engineering firms that do that. Verizon in this case did one themselves ahead of building the site, and they, they have their own internal resources in the way that they do that. If you wanted an independent third party to do it, um, it can certainly be done. Uh, I couldn't tell you what the costs look like for that off the top of my head, but, um, I don't think that's unreasonable. I, I haven't seen that as a requirement for, for the construction of a tower in the past. But that's not to say it doesn't exist in different areas to, to try to do a study on that.
So Patrick, as, as I was reading through this, this would only come into play if, um. Here again, um, would come under play in article or subarticle C point five. That if, so I, I, I spent a lot of time reviewing this and, and maybe to summarize it. All cell, all cell towers have to, have to apply for a conditional use. I shouldn't say cell towers, all.
Communications.
Telecommunication facilities. And that's not necessarily a tower. That's one of the things I want to talk about tonight, um, that they have to come to this, to this group for a conditional use. And then they have to comply with, with basically what our ordinance says, and if they can't, if they don't comply, like maybe distance from a residential neighborhood or height or whatever, then they can use this sub-paragraph and say there are no other alternatives.
Correct, it's either five A, they meet the requirements, or B and C apply.
Then, that they demonstrate there's a, an, a gap and there are a need for it, and that they can prove that there's no other alternative sites available.
Correct.
So that would be the only time that this would come into play.
Yes. Yes, it would come into play and if they're looking for the B and C.
So that would kind of address the current situation that we're dealing with, where we can't find a place that's far enough away from residential neighborhood that is available and that serves the gap in coverage.
One, one note I would just make on the RF propagation studies, what those don't do is, as effectively is, uh, is to be able to help you understand current usage and bandwidth. So they'll tell you like, if I put antennas up on two-hundred-foot tower, where will, where, you know, can I touch, you know? But in terms of like capacity and density of, well, if there's a thousand people in this area using that site, it's a little harder to identify the need. So the one tower that you have right now might look like, oh, it's sufficient coverage, but it's more just a number of users that are pinging off that tower. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
That when Houston's is going on, there's an event there, whether it's the races or a concert or whatever, that there's just so many concentrated people there, all pulling additionally off one tower.
Exactly, yeah.
So if you did the study, it would have to be based including that demand also.
Correct.
But, but I think we were talking about the, our, whatever the, yeah, the emissions, weren't we, before he came in?
So we did briefly talk about how there is that additional or conversation language starting on page twenty-seven about how the ongoing evaluation for FCC compliance language. I don't know if that's common or not, I found a few that had that in there, I don't know what our balance is, it's not us regulating the admissions, it's just guaranteeing that the standard is maintained. I don't know how often the FCC would come out and do, ensure compliance, maybe they don't, maybe it's a, you start out that way and they just.
Probably pretty unlikely the FCC themselves would come out and look at compliance, and I don't, I don't know the law well enough to know. I mean, it sounds like you found this in another city, whether or not this is a requirement you can legally put in there, because as far as the FCC looks at it, RF emissions are like, uh, a non-issue. They're not supposed to be involved in, in the way that, uh, you look at zoning for a tower site. So whether or not people agree with that, that's what the FCC is, is determined. So, I, maybe you already verified this is legally could go in the language, I'm not sure.
I have not yet, this was just proposed based on what we saw other places. This wouldn't be us regulating what the number is, it would just be, this is what the FCC says you have to do, we just want you to ensure you are complying with what the FCC wants. So I don't, I don't know that's much surrounding that, this is just kind of a preliminary thing, if that's something you all are interested in us taking more of a look at, or if you don't think it's necessary and beyond the scope and just want it Xed out of there, that's fine too.
Well, let me, let me ask this, when, when you put a tower up, you have to submit, I'm assuming you have to submit a bunch of paperwork and a bunch of tests as to what, what RF or what signal or whatever you're, you're putting out, right?
The two main things that we file from like a permitting regulatory standpoint is, we file an FCC antenna verification permit. So the FCC looks at the site, they look at the height, and they, they look at those impacts, I don't know everything that they're measuring for, but, but they look at that. And then you file with the FAA, uh, cause there's potential risk for a tall tower and airplanes. Basically, the FAA wants to make sure that you're far enough away from airports, and if you are a tall enough tower, you have to have lighting. So those are the two things that the federal government looks at with towers.
And so if you were to ever do any adjustments, add another antenna on a tower, do anything like that, you would have to go through that whole process again, right?
Actually not, you don't, you don't, not every time that you make, add an appurtenance on the tower, that wouldn't be a, a new application with the FCC.
Are we, with, with this, uh, testing, are we trying to prevent everybody in Brandon growing a third arm or? I mean, is, is, is what's being emitted off of cell towers.
What is, would you call them, yeah?
RF emissions.
Yeah, what does RF stand for and what are they?
So RF is radio, radio frequency, basically just the airwaves, I'm no scientist, but I'll do my best to describe it. The airwaves that are going through the air that are coming to our cell phones, I mean, they, they're, they're on all different frequencies. So what they found, the ones that actually are considered to potentially have the greatest, uh, potential to have to do harm to life are TV. Um, if you got up really close, there's some, there's a KDL, KDLT tower, KSF Y tower, uh, south of, or east of Sioux Falls, two-thousand-foot are really tall towers. Um, and they have big old, um, antennas on the top. A person, if a person gets up next to one of those when they're live, you can feel it, it warms you up. Um, and so those are the ones that have the highest RF emission capability, those have been around for a hundred years, however long TV's been around. Cell phones operate on much smaller wavelengths, and so according to the FCC, they're much less, uh, potential harm. I mean, if there were harm from RF emissions, the greatest likelihood is that when we put a cellphone up to our ear, that would be the risk. Um, most of us do that all the time, so according to the FCC, there's really no, no significant risk of cancer or anything like that from cellphone RF emissions.
So, and, and you said that according to the FCC, we're not, we're not allowed to take that into consideration when we.
There's two things that the.
Decide where these things can go?
Yeah, there's two things legally, the FCC has said that municipalities or states or counties can't, uh, look at when they're up allowing or disallowing a tower, which is aesthetics and RF emissions.
So we can use that when the whole neighborhood comes in and.
Yeah. Yeah, you can say, hey.
Remember that.
We weren't the ones who said this, yeah.
So aesthetics and the RFs. That's what it's gonna be.
Aesthetic, aesthetics are.
Just the way it looks.
I have the beholder, right?
Yeah.
You can't really, can't really write a list of what's aesthetically good or bad, can you?
Right, no, pretty tough. What, what, yeah.
I, I guess I'm okay with the, with, with this conceptually that, you know, if there's a gap, and they can prove there's a gap and a, and a need that needs to be addressed, and there's just no way to do it without breaking our ordinance, I'm okay with that. Because here again, it'll get shoved down our throat by the FCC anyway. So, I'm okay with including that in the ordinance. I don't, I don't know if we need to do the testing.
I, you know, as a tower owner, I'd, I'd ask you, strike that, but, but I'm, I'm respectful of your guys' stance on that. I think it probably warrants looking into what the FCC would allow. They might say that it's not legal to have that in there, but I can't say that with certainty. Um, I'm just not exactly sure how you'd go about regularly testing that or frequency or things like that. One of the things that I guess comes to mind when tower climbers climb TV towers, which have those higher RF emissions, they can have an RF monitor on their, uh, climbing harness, which if it goes above a certain point, you know, like, oh, there could be some risk. Um, so there is probably ways to do it, but I'm not super familiar, it'd be pretty unusual for a cellphone tower.
I guess one question I had was, um, and not trying to discount your statements, but how, Jonah, how do, how do we know that there isn't another spot available? I know that you've reached out to a lot of landowners and they all say no, is there any way to make them capitulate or, eh? Obviously, we can use eminent domain, but how, how do we know that?
I could probably, I don't know that I've given as much like specific detail on the different properties that we've looked at, landowners we've spoken to. I'd be happy to provide that information, you might find it of interest. Um, just to kind of reorient to what some of the challenges are to this, anything basically, draw a line right over the top of the Oak Ridge Nursery. Anything south of that, you start getting into Native American burial grounds, and it just becomes very, basically, we can't build the tower, I don't know if you can build anything else there. I spoke with Mike Coughlin actually just this week, who owns the Oak Ridge Nursery and the adjacent property. And as, as I understand it, they're thinking about developing the, the field to the west of the nursery. Um, but I was just looking at, there's a big old huge swath of what NEPA has identified as being culturally, archaeologically significant land. So, um, the closer you get to that, there's just more scrutiny with the State Historic Preservation Office, with all these different bodies which will just say no. And ultimately, the Native American tribes have a voice in that, and they can, uh, appeal to the FCC and say, no, we don't want a tower there. Um, so we've had to kind of draw a line there. I, I've, I've, that, that would be the most appealing, is to try to go on the, um, anywhere by Oak Ridge Nursery, and Mike's a super nice guy. Um, I'm almost certain we would get blocked, but, um, yeah, so I could provide information on the different plots of land that we've looked at, and maybe that'd be of interest.
You said Houston said no, right?
Houston said no, and they, they just, yeah, I can, they didn't, they haven't even really provided a reason other than that just, they're just not interested, so. Yeah, I don't know how, you just can't force somebody, I guess, is the challenge there. They were the first ones that, that we talked to, and I several times drove over and knocked on their door and just didn't get very far.
Did we want to talk about on lot setbacks? Are you comfortable doing that by conditional use permit? Would you like to set a standard for all wireless towers, whether it's a formula based on height or just a set number if it's a tower? Right now, conceptually, if you follow the table and you wanted to apply it consistently, the setback if for something sixty-five to seventy-five feet tall is a forty-foot front yard setback, twenty-five-foot side yard setbacks, and thirty-five feet on the rear. Is that a number you would want to apply to cell towers as well as all buildings in the institutional? Would you like something different for a tower versus a church or a school or something like that?
So, this is just for institutional, but we don't have anything like this in any of our other districts that allow, um, telecommunication facilities. We don't have it in central business, general business, light industrial, heavy industrial.
Correct, that's potentially a problem that we'll have to work on as well, just because those districts do have it and. I'm guessing the, the structures are larger than the max allowed in that district, usually, most things cap out at forty-five feet. And they're probably significantly taller than that, otherwise they're probably not very effective.
Right, so, based on where we're at right now, nobody can put up a tower because it's going to be too tall for any primary, max height for a primary structure.
If you were applying the strictness of the ordinance, correct?
Either problem that we run into on this site that you're looking at is it's only about sixty-five feet wide, so how with, with your tower and whatever equipment you need on the ground, how much footprint do you take up?
So on a site like this, we would look to, and what we have in our lease option with Alliance, the telecommunications company there, um, it's going to be like twenty-five by twenty-five foot. We have to fence it legally, um, so that people can't climb up the tower and hurt themselves. So we'd have about a twenty-five by twenty-five foot compound. Um, the base of the tower itself, you know, isn't really any bigger than this podium maybe, but then there is some ground-based equipment that Verizon would, would take up, you know, something like eight by eight feet, that they would install their little ground-based, uh, communications equipment, so. That's a relative, I, I don't know, hopefully that gives you some perspective on how much space this thing would take up on the ground.
From, just while I'm looking at the county GIS here, from the northwest corner of the Alliance building, it's about thirty feet on the sides of that and about eighteen feet to the north of that. So, I guess I don't know where you're looking at putting this, but, um.
Uh, do you have in, in the, we, we'd submitted a construction document proposal, I don't know if that's in the agenda tonight or not.
Might be in the, I tried to keep most things in your on desktop folder, so it might be in there. I do not have it in the packet.
Might be misspeaking on the twenty-five by twenty-five, but I'm, I'm pulling it up right now, so I can get a better idea of exactly what the footprint is.
If I remember right, it was on the left side of the lot, the west side, kind of in line with kind of the northwest corner of the existing structure. So it was, it was on that side, kind of.
That's right.
In the middle of where the property line and the, the building line of the current building would be, kind of in the middle there between them.
Pretty, pretty close to parallel on the west side of that existing building is, is where the tower would go, that's right. And I'm looking at it and what we have measured, we had it surveyed, is our lease area is actually measured as thirty by fifty. So if you go from the west lot line over to just about to that existing building, that, that's a little more than thirty feet, and then north to south is fifty. So I, I, I guess, this is, I'm looking at the survey right in front of me. So if you're seeing that it's something smaller than that on the GIS map, I guess I'm not totally sure why that would be. Okay, yeah.
And I don't know what the tower on North Ninth Street looks like, but my guess is there's probably not a ton of separation between the property line and the tower. I haven't been up there to measure the distance, but it's pretty small space.
Yeah, pretty much always when we apply for a tower in an urban area, uh, we're doing it as a conditional use, um, and as part of that conditional use, we're requesting, uh, you know, if we can't meet the internal lot setbacks, that's something that we ask to, for the consideration of the, of the jurisdiction. So we would have the tower pretty much nestled as close up to the building as we can, um, but that still puts it maybe twenty-five or twenty-eight feet away from the west lot line and something similar to that from the north and south.
Up there it looks like, I mean, just from the GIS, it's like eight feet from the, of the telecommunication building, not the tower itself. But then you'd have additional equipment though, right?
Yeah, so there would be some equipment getting closer to the fence, that's true. Yeah, so there would be some equipment getting closer to the fence, that's true.
I guess in, in my mind, I'm not, I'm not con- so concerned about special setbacks for the towers regard, regardless of the height. And here's, here's my thinking. Every tower's gonna have to have a, a fence around it. And the fence is gonna have to comply with the setbacks. So most of our, most of our districts, I don't know if we have any district that allows a, a fence in the front yard up against the property line. HI does?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Which we're not too concerned about that.
And even a residential can have a four-foot fence just on the inside of the property.
These are six-foot fence, six-foot minimum fences that are required around, around a tower.
Which is already a fence around the perimeter of this building, so we would just be kind of piggybacking off on those external fences. I don't know if those meet the setbacks or not, but that Alliance Building already is surrounded by a fence.
Fences really don't have setbacks. They would say just inside the property line. Inch, six inches of foot, I'll tell you there's no setbacks from fences.
So if we're going into, you know, a, a commercial, you know, general business, central business, um, the fence itself is going to put you back off the street based on where you can build and then the tower's gonna have to be inside that. So, and, and to me, when, when we talk about the tower heights and, you know, do we have, do we have different setbacks for different heights? Uh, to me, a tower is different than a building. Um, it's not like a, a large mass that's up there. You know, fifty feet in the air, forty feet in the air, sixty feet in the air. It's just, it's just a small element. Um, and so to me, I don't, I don't see that we should restrict our, whether it's a cell tower or just an antenna or something, another kind of tower on top of a building, um, that that should fall within our building height restrictions.
Are you saying that's because you can see through it? It's not like a solid mass blocking the sun, so to speak?
You know, I know a lot of ordinances state like churches, you know, steeples are exempt um, from, from the building heights, you know, because it's just, it's just a small element on the building. Now, obviously we don't want an entire building up fifty, sixty feet in the air, but if it's just an antenna or a tower or a steeple or something like that, I, I don't see that being an issue, so. But that's, that's just me.
I should mention, I, I, I met with, uh, Dr. Larson, the superintendent for Brandon's, uh, school district, super nice guy. Um, but, uh, understandably, he, he would, they wouldn't be, uh, the school district wouldn't be interested in rezoning their lot to the south, uh, which is currently residential. So with, with your ordinance as it's written, with us needing a, uh, the one-point-one type times height setbacks from a residential lot, um, that's going to impact the height of the tower that we can do. Um, but crunching the numbers and, and trying to figure out if we can make it work and I think it's tight, but, but it sounds like we probably can. So we wouldn't be looking at rezoning that, that school to the south at this point. So if they ever choose to rezone, I guess that's up to them, but it won't be because of the tower.
Does, does your tower have to be that high to take care of the, of the gaps in coverage? Or are you putting that tall in anticipation of additional growth?
So the height, uh, a hundred, so what we found from an RF propagation studies, a hundred feet is probably sufficient. The issue is, we build these towers so that we don't have to have another one going in a year. Ideally, you want it to be built so that T-Mobile and, and AT&amp;T and, and everybody else can also get the same, uh, you know, coverage with that site. So if Verizon's up at top at a hundred feet and now T-Mobile's gonna have to be at ninety and AT&amp;T's gonna have to be at eighty, um, it becomes an issue as you get lower down. So a hundred feet is probably okay. It's the question of is the tower now viable for the other tenants essentially?
So when we see these towers, you see the monopole going up and then you see the little, I, they look like little speakers up there.
Yeah, call them sector frames.
That's, that's one carrier.
Correct.
Okay.
So a, a tower in Sioux Falls, you might see kind of three levels and those are each a different carrier.
Okay. Thank you.
So are you saying that if, um, the tower's not tall enough to accommodate all the different companies, that we're gonna have somebody else in here want, wanting a tower?
Very wa- very possible. Yeah, yeah, that would be the potential risk is they would come back to you and say, we can't get away with ninety feet, so we want to build another tower. And then they're gonna be trying to ask for permission to do that somewhere else.
You guys are on this, this board forever. I'm done in a year and a half. I'm just pointing that out.
So what I am hearing for the wireless telecommunications tower language, minimum lot size, not applicable, minimum lot width, not applicable, and we would have no required, obviously maximum building height would be in the regulations itself, but from setbacks, basically we would not require any special setbacks above and beyond inside the fence, perimeter surrounding it.
I get, that's, that's my opinion. We just, we follow the building setbacks for the tower. And we exclude towers from the building height limitations.
I guess my, my point on the setbacks earlier was, um, it's only, that, that whole lot's only about sixty-five feet wide, so if he's at, you know, twenty-five foot wide and then there's front and rear setbacks of twenty-five each, that's seventy-five. So that lot is, I'm just not sure where you're gonna put it. It, you're kind of running out of room is all I'm.
So the setbacks are twenty, twenty-five feet or I guess I'm not totally clear on.
The front setback on institutional is twenty-five feet and the rear is twenty-five and then the side is seven.
So based on height, right now, if you said that table applied, you would set it by conditional use, but if for sixty-five to seventy-five feet, the front yard setback is forty feet.
Yeah, uh.
Then twenty-five on the sides and thirty-five in the rear. So that's.
The, the lowest one is, is less than thirty-five feet. It's, so at the lowest one, it's less than twenty-five, less than thirty-five foot. The front is twenty-five and the rear is twenty-five and the side is seven. So not even going by the, the height of the tower, I'm just going by the, I was saying just on the lowest height. So that's, I'm not sure if that's something we need to look at. Um, cause I, I just, the, with the Alliance Building right in the middle of that, it's just, it's gonna be pretty tough with your setbacks, I guess. So on, if we went by the lowest setback, if we, if we went by the highest setback, I don't know. That, that would, that would work, but.
So yeah, you, you tell me if I'm thinking about this the right way. The lot from north to south is about sixty feet. I think we agree on that. So if the tower is in the middle of that sixty feet, theoretically has thirty feet on either side for the front and rear setback. Am I thinking of that the right way or am I misunderstanding?
The setback would basically eat up this, that amount of space both directions. So whatever is left, if anything, in the middle is where you could build.
So it'd have to be pretty much squarely right in the middle and maybe it would apply to, yeah. And that's where we have it. So that's not actually an issue for us.
Sorry for the side conversation here. The current Alliance Building doesn't meet the institutional zoning anyway. To rezone it to institutional, it'd be out of compliance. Um, so that's where, that's what we were discussing.
That is another hurdle, just because we, we wouldn't want to rezone something and create a non-compliance. Just like with, like when we're replating, we don't want to create non-compliance.
It doesn't meet the current rear setback and it doesn't meet the current minimum size of institutional. So for institutional, that's kind of the direction we've been kind of discussing, but, um, anyway, that's, that was the conversation we were having, so.
Are we gonna run into problems with that with the pump house up on I-90 Plaza? For size, if that switches to institutional? We have a few parks in town that aren't an acre as well, so. Whether that number, if you want to be the default number, if you want the there to be no default number, or if you want a, you want a default number, but then there are categories that are less based on what it is or more based on what it is. That's certainly up to you.
Yeah, I know, I mean, from my recollection, when we crafted the institutional zone, it was we, we really thought about the one acre size when we talked about some of the other setbacks stuff. So if we're gonna do something, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't want to abandon that, but I think if you just said, Patrick, that there could be different categories that could allow other things, but as a general rule, I would like to see that changed holistically in the zone.
If we rezone to general business, is that viable or is there a reason why that wouldn't be appropriate for this lot?
So general business does not have a minimum lot area. There is a lot with, there's a frontage requirement, but the lot's probably sixty feet wide. Your, your issue there would probably be you are spot zoning a GB lot with nothing similar around it. You're just pinpointing and whether that would be legal or not depends on a lot of factors. One is generally if it's part of a plan, it's more acceptable than if it's not. If it's just a random or act where, where it runs into problems are, well, my buddy owns this lot and it's in the middle of a neighborhood, but you know, he really wants to run a slaughterhouse out of his house. So we're gonna rezone this lot for him and let him do what he wants because he's my buddy and I trust him. That's, that's the most extreme case where it's a problem, but spot zoning is legally complicated. This generally has to be some kind of plan. So whether it's we're rezoning all utility type things to X, that's probably more acceptable than we're just picking this one out. It's some kind of plan or s- rationale behind it. It's more than we just want to.
Understood.
Whatever we, but whatever we put there's gonna be a spot zone. Because it's surrounded by a residential. So no matter what we zone that, currently it's an NRC.
Yep.
If we ever rezone that, it's gonna be a spot zone. If it's institutional, if it's commercial, if whatever it is, it won't be residential.
Institutional's a little easier just because you could kind of make that argument. We're, we want all city and municipal and utility things to be this. That's why we're doing it rather than we're just doing it. So that's a little bit more of the, the plan side of things. We want all water towers and utility buildings and city buildings and parks to be this district. That's why we made the change.
I, I don't disagree with that, but I guess my point is no matter what we put there's gonna be a spot zone. I, I do have a question. How, how are these utility type locations able to put fences right up against the property lines if they're not allowed in any of our districts to have a, a fence on the front of the property line? We've got all these substations.
We do allow front yard fences. They just have to be off the property line. They just can't be immediately on the property line because then you run into maintenance agreements that you would have to have with the neighbors and we just would rather not deal with that because three sales later, no one knows who's supposed to replace the fence. Of course, it's always their neighbor that has to pay a hundred percent cost of the fence they want fixed, but they ca- they ca- and we do allow fences in front yards. They're just limited on height usually.
Do we have, we don't have any specific zoning then for like substations, water towers, utility companies of any sort then, right? It's just goes into like a industrial or something like that.
Most of the districts I think do have things called neighborhood utility or public utility facility. So it's kind of just broadly across the whole districts. Whether that's the way it should be or not, that's the way we have it. And most things would fall under that. So conceptually allowed everywhere, whether we wanted to restrict them more, you certainly can. You probably wouldn't. Most people aren't gonna put up a lift station or anything like that, but it, tha- that's the way we have it. You allow utility facilities in the districts broadly.
Isn't this considered a public utility? It's not. It's not pri- I mean, it's owned privately, but it's for public use.
The complicated area of law as well is a cell, is cell service a u- a public utility?
And that would, that was kind of our, our very beginning when we were thinking about all this. If we could just get Brandon to recognize cell towers as a public utility, we almost don't even, it seems like the rest of this becomes null and void, but.
Might be a public utilities commission.
To me, they're more public than an electrical substation. I can't, I can't tap into that power provided by that substation unless I pay a fee. I can drive by any tower and use it.
As far as I know, the PUC does not see cell towers as a public utility. They regulate, but I do not know.
I'm not actually totally sure. I mean, they're privately owned, so that might be the distinction.
I'm just kind of thinking because like the Alliance Building here, we, we really have to find a zone that fits for it. It's, is that, is that NRC? Is that right? That that building's in?
Correct. My guess is it was brought in and never changed.
Yeah.
The detention pond developed around it. No one made an effort to do anything.
But it's out of compliance.
It was probably built before. We probably had a zoning to regulate it. I'm not sure how long it was there, but probably quite a while.
I'm not sure, but I, I guess my point is that we, we currently have a building that's on a site, it's out of compliance in its current site. We are considering rezoning it to another zone that it doesn't fit in because it's out of compliance. I think we need to, and it, I think it's a need. I don't think that they've done anything wrong, but I, I don't think that we need to require buildings like that to have an acre. It'd be a ridiculous use of land to require a building like that to have an acre. Um, I don't think it would be a, uh, I, I think it needs to have a, a place where it can go that's not a spot zone. It's not out of compliance. Um, I just, we need to find somewhere for it to go. So I don't know if we need to have a subcategory in institutional that you can have in a, you know, utility type or personal, not personal, but, um, public use type structures. I don't know what terminology we want to use, but, um, I don't think we want to get too vague that somebody comes in and opens up a Starbucks and says it's for the public good or something, but, um, but we need to find a, a way that we can have uses like that that are in compliance. And not be spot, not be considered spot zone because you wouldn't, you wouldn't set up a district of buildings like that. They're gonna be spot zones. They're gonna be one building over on this side of town, one building on that side of town. They don't need to be large lots.
Well, is the city gonna eventually rezone their property to, or to institutional there?
Potentially. I, ideally, the city would rezone all of its stuff.
That was kind of the whole idea of the institutional technically was to have the city go all of that, all their property they own.
Yep.
So then now.
I, I say probably because it's not my decision to make.
If they do do that, well then, now there's a, there's an institutional there and then.
But it's still out of compliance on setbacks. I've just, I, we have so many problems with it.
So the other argument, so right now, the nursery is outside of city limits. Eventually they'll be in city limits. They're gonna be commercial. Is that a spot zone?
The nursery itself is in.
But that's commercial, right?
General business right now.
So is that a spot zone because it's one lot surrounded by other stuff?
I can't speak for Housit's, but I'm fairly confident that lot west of the racetrack, they own and intend to turn into some sort of a business district. I don't know exactly how they're developing it, but that was what I was. I don't know exactly how they're developing it, but that was what I was, is explained to me by them. But they haven't applied for that yet. So there might be more blue down there, I guess is my point.
I mean, eventually, I don't know what you wanna call it, if you wanna call it, I mean, that, that street has several names, but. I call it Maple, the one that goes down the bridge. That's gonna be a pretty major street. And I, I envision that being. Some neighborhood business, light commercial type stuff. So I, I wouldn't see, I wouldn't have a problem spot zoning it. Well, I would like, just speaking of Hucids ground, I would rather see that general business down there because they need it down that way of town too. I mean, just with where we're going. I know, I talked with Mike Coughlin several, several years ago, and he wanted to develop commercial in that area.
You have something to add, Danny? I saw some scowling over there.
Um, I mean, it's Park Street and the city limits of Brandon, not Maple. Um, I think in our comprehensive plan, a lot of that is general business and light industrial. But we were working through trying to update some of that.
That would be the plan aspect of it, if it conforms to a plan.
But wasn't there some talk of that empty land of, um, what do I wanna say? Multi-use where commercial and then housing up above? That was one of the ideas, so I don't know what that would be zone. Is that, is that the neighborhood thing?
Potentially. It, when they submit a plan, we will evaluate the plan. But our understanding is yes, kind of a mixture of residential and commercial. But they have not submitted anything, so that's more hypothetical than reality.
And I know we have to try to think ahead, but I don't know that we can, you know, worry about every possible option out there either. Since everything is hypothetical at this point.
As, as I've thought about this, I think one thing's for sure, which is which that flood plain retention pond area that the city owns is never gonna be developed into anything. So I don't think you have to worry about spot zoning being up against something else on that northwest side. So that'd be my argument for not fearing making our lot institutional.
Looks like on the, the comp plan, looks like south of Park and east of Split Rock, which is Hucids area, whatever, and down to. Oak Ridge is all commercial. So we're, and we're at the intersection of Split Rock and Park, which are two main roads. I, I think going general business would not be, I, I guess I wouldn't call that spot zoning necessarily. I feel more comfortable with general business there than institutional with the problems that we've already addressed. With institutional on that lot.
So then would that Alliance property be in compliance if it's general business? I mean, are, would we be able to get around that then?
Yeah, I think we meet setbacks. Cause rear setback is only five feet instead of twenty-five. And the front's still twenty-five. So you'd still probably be a little bit tight on some stuff there. But um, you gain twenty feet in the back on general business over institutional. And you don't have the minimum lot requirement.
So Patrick, what do you need from us tonight?
I, I think we've worked through it. So you're leaning more towards not so much amending the institutional, but adding the wireless tower as, to the lot and yard table and general business. It sounds like with kinda what we talked about earlier, how we wouldn't require specific on lot setbacks for that use. As well as the maximum building height would not apply to that because it's regulated elsewhere.
Yeah, that's where I'm leaning at.
Earlier when we discussed GB versus institutional, there was some concern about once you rezone something, you get the list. Is that a concern anymore?
Not with general business. My concern, because before I had mentioned like industrial or something, because that's what the substation up on Split Rock and Redwood is. And that's industrial. And I don't know that we want industrial going in across from a school because then they could do things. But general business, I think would, would fit in that location. Corner of two main streets, uh, there's general business to the southeast of there. Park is gonna be certainly a, a busy street. There could be with the schools, there's not gonna be a lot of business right there. But um, who knows what will happen on the um, east side of, of Sioux there with those acreage lots. I mean, those could be, that could, some of that could turn into commercial, I don't know. But I don't, I, I think there's a big difference between looking at it as industrial and looking at it as general business. And I feel much more comfortable with general business than I do with industrial.
Okay. So I will take your comments and we will have a draft where basically what we just talked about. We scrapped institutional idea and do more of a general business idea.
So is the left side over here amenable to that?
I'm still okay with allowing it in institutional, because I don't, I don't think we give up on that.
Okay, we just do an institutional, a general business.
Just we, but we add it, we add it as a, as a conditional use in institutional, just like we do in the other court.
Okay.
But we should probably look at institutional for lot sizes for future city stuff.
Yes, we'll, we'll add it to the list.
Um, so earlier, as I was going through this, I came a lot, crossed a lot of issues with um, terminology definitions. Um, and I, I, my computer's not working, so I can't go and provide specific locations. But in, in our, in the four zones that currently allow it, H I L I, G B and C B. It talks about telecommunications facility on an existing support structure slash base station. As I looked in the rest of our ordinance, there's no definition of support structure or base station. So I was trying to get my arms around, what is that? Because we do define telecommunications tower. So is support structure tower? What, what is a base station? I, I don't understand those terms.
So those are, to the best of my knowledge, FCC terms. A base station is, uh, you prob- common language would probably be a support structure if you didn't know anything. But base station, I believe is the term they use. They're basically the same thing. It's anything that's not a tower that you can hook a cell tower on. The wall outside this building could be a base station. Pretty much anything where you could stick cell equipment would be a base station that's not a tower. The wall or tower would be a base station.
I guess I would, if we don't have a definition in there, if we're not gonna put a definition there, I would just say attached to an existing structure. Because it might be a water tower, it might be a building.
Yeah, because technically I think City Hall is a base station for their tower, right? Probably. So the goal with the terms was to be FCC compliant. We can either remove the use of base station and substitute it with the more common phrasing, or we can add a definition of base station, whatever you think is best.
So that, that was one issue. Um, and then as I was reading through it, I think there's a lot, there's some inconsistencies. And we're calling things towers, we're calling things uh, telecommunications facilities, we're calling things antennas. And when we, in our definition for a telecommunications facility, those include antennas. Um, but we, and I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't have my computer here. But if you read the definition of telecommunications facilities, that's anything and everything that transmits. Any type of radio or data type, anything wirelessly. And so technically, any, any antenna would need to go through a conditional use according to this chapter. So I, I think we've way overcomplicated things by mixing and matching terminology, by lack of definitions. Cause if you, if you go to the, I can't, I can't open it up. But if you go to the definition of a telecommunications facility, it covers anything that transmits. Not just cell towers, not TV tow- not just TV towers. It is any, anything and everything that transmits wireless.
I'm seeing telecommunications tower. Um, telecommunications, telecommunications tower height, telecommunications tower site. The tower does say. Um, towers that are used for services such as microwave, common carrier, cellular telephone, personal communication devices, two main radio paging and similar devices. Does that sound like what you were talking about or?
Uh, there was one, there was a definition of a telecommunications facility. Somewhere in there, I, I don't remember where it was. Um, but according to that, any, anybody that puts up one of those has to go through a conditional use. Whether it's on a tower, whether it's directly attached to the building, I don't know if we have ever done that. But according to our ordinance, anything and everything has to go through here. And it's not, it's not because of a tower, it's because of the, it's because of the antennas or transmitting or receiving devices that are put on the tower.
The definition that you're looking for, Brooks, is wireless telecommunications. It starts with a W.
Yeah. So thou, under subsection three A, all new facilities shall be set back at least three hundred feet from a residentially zoned property, blah, blah, blah. But I think we're, here again, we're mixing and matching terms. I don't think we're talking about facilities because that's, that's the device attached to the tower. In that paragraph, we're talking about towers should be set back, right? Because otherwise we've got a lot of things that are out of compliance. For example, the, the city's transmitting facility is not set back three hundred feet from a residentially zoned tower facility. So I'm, I, I think we're, we're mixing and matching terminology and inconsistently calling things. Um. Under three point D, base stations shall not exceed or project more than fifteen feet beyond the existing building or structure. Well, the base station is the building or structure. Under subsection F, facilities shall not bear any signs or advertising devices. I think what we're intending there is the towers don't have any advertising signs or devices, not the facilities. And then uh, subsection four, on page one oh two. Each wireless facility needs to go through a conditional use. But yet I think if I remember correctly, HI, it's a permitted use. So that kinda contradicts i- if it's a permitted use, why are they going through a conditional use? There was another section. I think in the proposed language, it talks about the height. Oh, here it is. So three point C talks about the height of the tower. Uh, shall not exceed one hundred feet for a single provider or two hundred feet for multiple providers. Um, but to me, that contradicts um, C two F. C two F says. Uh, written statement of the applicant's willingness to allow other carriers to co-locate on the proposed telecommunications facility. So where, where is that contradict? So in, in that first paragraph I written, or I, I stated, it talks, it limits you. So if say Verizon, I'm not talking to your situation, but if say Verizon came and they wanted to put up a tower to put their antennas on. Our ordinance would say you can't exceed one hundred feet because you're a single provider. But yet as part of the permit application, they have to agree to allow other carriers on their tower. So to me, that's, that's a contradiction within our, within our ordinance.
Most municipalities require you to build a tower to be able to support at least three uses. That's pretty much what we always see.
Yeah, and that's, that, I'm just pointing out some things that we maybe need to clean up. That, you know, contradicts or maybe isn't clear or uh, mixes and matches terminology. Cause in, in some locations, we're talking about facilities, some locations we're talking about towers. And then do we, do we require everybody to go through a conditional use just to put up the transmitting or receiving device? Or is it just to put up the tower?
So you're adding that to Patrick's to-do list at some point? So that's the whole section on whatever, what I'm trying.
We will go through fifteen fifteen seven and take a look to make sure it all syncs up.
Okay, so Jonah would probably like to have a, an E, a Thursday evening free. Um, do you have enough, Patrick? Is the board in consensus here on what was discussed? Yeah, all right, thank you.
Yeah, just a final question, and maybe I can ask you this after Patrick. But uh, can I get any feedback on when you imagine there could be a vote? Now, I'm not even trying to insult you, but are we a month out, a couple of months out?
So the big thing, of course, is we are mandated with timelines and requirements by the state. So in order to hold a public hearing, we have to publish notice in the newspaper, and that has to be in there ten days ahead of time. So newspaper, we get information to them on a Friday that's published the next Wednesday. So then the ten days starts from that Wednesday. So then you have to calculate that into where their meetings fall. So sometimes it could be a month, sometimes it could be less from the time they determine to schedule a public hearing. So it's at best, say, we are good to go on the twentieth. We would get information to the newspaper, probably maybe the twenty-first, it might be the twenty-eighth. Say it's the twenty-first. It would be, it would be published then on the twenty-sixth, then you would add ten days. Ten days would not match up to the sixth of March, so then you would be at the twentieth of March. So roughly, probably a month from the time they schedule the public hearing.
There's agreement on the language at the next meeting. We're looking at maybe a vote on the language change on the twentieth of March.
At best, yes. So you're, you're probably looking at April, probably sometime, at best.
Okay.
Likely April, at the earliest.
Thank you.
Government moves very slow. Thank you, thanks Jonah, appreciate all your patience on this. Okay, moving on to number eight, institutional district conditional uses, page twenty-nine.
Yep, so we talked about that as part of the cell tower discussion.
Okay, so then we can go to residential districts memo?
Yep, so what seems like ages ago, we started talking about residential districts, how we wanted them to work, what terms we wanted to use. Did we want to stick with single family attached? Did we want to separate that out more into twin homes, duplexes, townhouses? Did we want to stick with the term family, which is legally complicated? What is a family? Did we want to maybe shift more towards defining what a household is rather than a family and go that way? So there are a couple of things we talked about. I just kind of threw my immediate recollections down on a memo as just a place so we can get that conversation started again. We have one thing that does come up often when we have rows of townhouses are, it's point three on page thirty-two of the packet. There is the requirement that projections, if you have it just a patio below twelve inches height, so a paved patio has to be five feet from adjacent side of rear lot lines. Where it becomes an issue is you have a row of townhouses generally, like their patio on the internal interior units to span their section. So is it, I, I, I get where it works for a single family detached house. Is that what you intend for something like a townhouse, that we would require them to clip off their patio five feet from their side property lines? If they're an interior unit? And then, other things to fix, there are some numbers that overlap. We have five to thirty-six dwelling units as permitted uses, and it's thirty-six or more as conditional. Just a minor change, you probably make the second number thirty-seven plus, just prevent that overlap. Are there any type of residential uses that we should have, but don't? Rob would probably be a good expert on that, how we should word things. And accessory dwelling units always come up. Those are mother-in-law suites or secondary bedrooms or secondary little apartment units on places. Sioux Falls has started to move that direction. There are houses where it's a lot with a main house and kind of a second house. Is that something we want to allow right now? They, they are not. So just some initial thoughts, but certainly if we're going through the residential districts broadly, we are open to a lot of thoughts. My plan is to, at some point, we do have a, a group of developers we meet with, not as, probably as often as we should. If we're going through the residential districts, we may pull, then this would not necessarily be at a planning and zoning meeting, it would just be during the day of staff time, that we would try to get feedback from them about what they see the trends are and what what they would like to see from our regulations. Obviously, we're not bound by that, since obviously, I'm guessing most builders would want it as profitable as they can. You know, what, what their preferences might not sync up with yours, but, you know, to get their feedback, cause ultimately, they're the ones providing and building the housing. So these are just some initial thoughts to get that conversation restarted, since it sounds like we had a fair amount of work to do with the residential districts as well.
On the number three there with the setbacks, don't they, isn't it a zero setback on the side? Isn't that what your concern would be with patios? From one unit to the next of the side would be a zero setback.
The building would, but this specifies that the paved patio has to be five feet from adjacent side or rear lines. So that would be different than the house. So you would have it kind of, you know, you have the house and then it would have to jot in for the little patio. Is that how you want it to be? Currently, that is how we've been interpreting it. It will play a role. We have a lot of townhouses that are gonna be potentially built next year and that would impact them.
Yeah, I think when that was, if I remember correctly, I, I think I was, that was when I was here in my early years. That was set up to actually give a little bit of leniency. Because that was set up, you know, if we have a sub foot side yard setback for the house, we were allowing only five for the decks. If that makes sense. So that your deck could be closer to the property line than your house. Well, since then, we've relaxed our R two setbacks to five, from, from seven to five. And then now we've got our, our zero setbacks on, on the, uh, common property line. So yeah, I think that makes sense. It shouldn't be any less, or sorry, more restrictive than the building setback.
Would you agree with that, Rob?
I guess I, yeah, I, I thought that, looking at this, it kind of makes sense that you have, you'd allow them on a, a low deck or a patio, more room in the rear, cause you're not truding on the rear as much as a high deck would be. You're probably behind a privacy fence and you're, you know, you're in your backyard where a, a deck is set back further because you're up higher. But on the side, especially on a townhome, I, I think going to that zero setback would probably be okay. There's probably gonna be a privacy fence there and not a very wide unit anyway, so that seems like that's what I see more in Sioux Falls anyway. I don't know. I don't really pay attention to it that close. Usually, everything's setbacks, but it seems like they're against the property line.
So Patrick, you were saying the accessory dwelling units, what are they moving toward in Sioux Falls?
It costs a lot to put up housing. Rents are increasing. Incomes are not increasing as fast as rent. So one solution that some community, it's, it's an older style of development than we moved into, you know, one house, one lot. Historically, there probably wasn't a cap on the amount of housing you could put on a lot. Some places have, you have your main house and you have kind of a smaller separate quarters where historically, probably workers in the house lived in the smaller structure. But now, is that something you want to offer where somebody wants a separate space different from the house, whether it's an above a garage apartment, if it's, I don't, the, the kid doesn't want to live in the parent's house anymore, cause they want some independence, but they can't afford a half a million dollar house in Brandon either. Kinda, if you want a smaller house that's on the same lot as the main house, or a room above a garage, or never wise to do it. Right now, we do not allow accessory dwelling units if disconnected from the primary. And whether that's a trend you want, or maybe there's just, isn't a market here, I don't know. It's, some places are going that way just because costs are high.
I think there can be some advantages to it. The, the concern is, if you're gonna do it, thinking through the problems before their problems, but I think Sioux Falls does allow it. I think they require additional parking for that, the accessory unit. The difficulty is, you know, if, if you build a, you know, apartment above a garage, something like that, you could easily have soap ceilings and, and for, when you measure a house, there's ways that you measure and stuff, and it'd be easy to have an apartment that someone builds it, and so there isn't actually any square footage in there. And then how, I'm not sure how you regulate that as far as considering a living space and so I, there's some, I guess, concerns, I don't know how our inspector feels about people building living units in their garage and renting them out or having Airbnbs in there. I don't know what kind of concerns they might have, but I think there could be some advantages to it. I think it could open a lot of, yeah, a can of worms, a lot of problems too, so.
You s- you see it a lot, but my concern would be that they, they build an accessory structure closer to the property line than the, than the primary. Because we have setbacks that are different for accessory structures, and then they come in later and convert it into livable space. And so then they're putting up basically another house closer to the property line than the main house is allowed, so. That would, to me, that would be a little bit difficult to enforce, and you, we'd probably start to see a lot of, a lot of people coming in for variances where, you know, they built a two-story garage, five feet off the property line, and then they want to come in and fit it up for a, a living space, and it doesn't meet the sub foot setback.
So are we just asking for trouble at this point if we put something in there?
I'm, I'm okay if we pursue it, but I'm just, I'm just trying to foresee some of the potential issues that we might have on some existing structures that are maybe already in place that people want to convert over. Well, I think you'd start at, you'd have to have a certain lot size even, if you think about it, you know? That's how I would start, you know, obviously, but.
But if they already had, like, let's say they had a, a garden shed. Doesn't that count as their one add-on? So then this would be another one?
About now the garden shed would turn into a living quarters.
Right, but what if they wanted a garden shed and another building, a shouts?
And if you, you know, you have a detached garage, the setbacks for the detached garage are different than the main home. And then you convert that into accessory unit, you know, an apartment or whatever you wanna call it. And now you have a living quarters that's outside of what we allow for setback for the living area. And so, um, you know, the, the opportunity for it, unless you're building something new, which a lot of times these accessory units are not something new, they're something that's converted. And the, the, the chances of that being in a situation that we currently don't allow, the setbacks would be different than what we currently allow the setbacks for living areas. So it, it, it could be a lot of trouble, but.
Paul, wouldn't it be also like, if they're retrofitting something, that it wouldn't be up to like fire code for housing?
Potentially, yeah. I mean, I've definitely heard of Portland and Omaha, and there's other major cities that have geographic limitations, and they're allowing it. And I think what's happening with setbacks and these detached accessory structures, the trend dwelling units is that they're relaxing the setbacks. Cause you know, I think, I think when I heard the board say that you've got a mindset of, you've gotta keep these setbacks because if you're dwelling in it, I think these cities are doing them, but they're relaxing the setbacks for dwelling units, and they're allowing it to be less than X number of feet. When, you know, we get the set, set pattern, so. But yeah, you, you, there's no question, when you convert something over, there needs to be building code issues and fire code issues to separate some smoke alarms in bedrooms and all that kind of stuff.
But Rob's point, I think they're at the same, playing devil's advocate with myself here, but there could be times where if you have a large enough lot, you could build a garage with an apartment above it, all to code. Have a mother-in-law, you know, there where you, you know, you, you do have family that lives there, or you have a lot of friends that come and visit, so you want to have an apartment for them, whatever. There, there could be a use for it that could be really kind of neat, kind of, you know? But you'd have to have the property for it, and I, I, I would be concerned with relaxing our setbacks, cause that's not, you know, part of our job, or not part of our job. Our job here is to protect one property from another property in zoning. So if a, someone moves into a house, and then all of a sudden we change the rules and their neighbor now has an apartment overlooking their yard, that's not what they were looking for, so we gotta be cognizant of that. So, um, I think it, I think there's some potential there, but I would proceed with caution.
Wouldn't you just call it a guest, guest room or a guest suite? Wouldn't necessarily call it a separate thing.
Well, if it's in a separate building.
Well, yeah. I like how you do, uh, call a household instead of family. That seems like it'd be a lot easier to, to, uh, deal with. You don't have to ask everybody, you know, in the house, are you related by blood or, you know? So that seems like it would be a good idea.
If we look at household instead of family, do we need to look at, you know, like, number of occupants? You know, how we do that, you know, there's, I've seen some different guidelines, you know, two grown adults per bedroom, you know, maximum. You want maximum occupancy in a single-family dwelling, um, some things like that. There is, I think there's, you know, FHA has some guidelines that they use. But I don't know if we wanna change how we look at the, there can be three non-family members or whatever, or change it to household and then set requirements for how many bedrooms there are, how many people can live there, or how many adults can live there.
We, we currently have a, a definition for family, and, and that includes not married people. And I, I think that definition is okay, it's just we changed the term from family to household. Right? Is that kind of what you're implying with this, Patrick? Not, not necessarily changing the mix of people that we would allow to live in one unit? But just changing the name family to household, right?
So it, it does a little bit, household, the, the definition I threw in here just for conversation focuses on people living together as an economic unit rather than the number of people or their relationship to each other. It's, it's, you know, it, evidence of the economic relationship is, you know, they pay a portion of collective rent mortgage or property taxes. It, it looks more at their living arrangement rather than their relationship.
When I read that, I think of a frat house.
Arguably, yes.
But, you know, we, cause we talked about this a few meetings back, what, you know, what's, what's the definition of family and, and how many non-related people living together, you know, over the age of eighteen? I think, I think that definition would still hold. We would just call it a household and not a family.
But if we have a limit as, suppose some sort of limit of who can, how many can live in there, who's gonna police that? I mean, from a realistic standpoint, unless we have a complaint, right?
Right, but then if you have a complaint, you have something you can go against. You can say, this is our rule, and so now we can enforce it. So I think that ha- having it there gives us the authority to enforce it if there's a problem. I don't think we have to go around knocking on doors. But if there's a problem and we don't have, like, uh, ordinance for it, then what do we do?
Okay, Paul, you deal with it. So how do you deal with it?
Well, just by chance, in the last week, we did get a, maybe it was ten days ago, we did get a complaint through the school, through the police, and through my office, and through child protective services, that there was a house that had a variety of issues from lice, cockroaches, and bed bugs, and then overcrowding. That's what the student said to the authorities, and it got, so then I run a ledge to the landlord, and he approached, and he already knew that it was a, an extended family in there with extended kids. And he probably knew that he was stretching what was being allowed in there, but he's a landlord and they're paying rent, and as long as nobody complained, but that complaint came through. A lot of people got involved, and then he terminated the, the lease, and they're now gone, so. You know, um, they're, I'm not sure if they went someplace else, or went to Sioux Falls, who knows? But, um, so in overcrowding, you know, as I think was mentioned, it, it's hard to put your hands around it, but in, in as for property maintenance, cause there's a little chart that says, you know, so many people can be in so many bedrooms, as you mentioned and stuff, so there's a, but I've, I've never had to pull that, that card before. But I did write to the landlord and said there was an overcrowding issue, and then it, you know, it, it terminated, so.
So that's separate from what our ordinance would say, the, the, the card with the, how many can be in a bedroom? That would be separate? Or is that in our stuff?
No, no, that, that'd be in as for property maintenance, cause it would be separate from the zoning stuff, yes, ma'am. No, no, that, that'd be in the National Property Maintenance Code, it'd be separate from the zoning stuff, yes, ma'am.
Both codes are adopted by the city, so they would be applicable. If they conflict with each other, the, the stand, the rule is the more strict one controls.
So do we have a limit on it right now? I don't know. Is there, is it three people? What do we have, what do we say in ours specifically right now? Uh, uh, is it family, or is it a nu- number?
I think most towns are.
Well, it's three non-related, so I think we kind of came to the conclusion that if a middle wife or, or a couple are married, then two other people could live there. I'm, but I don't know if we ever quite got clarification, but that's kind of what we were, we were at, so.
Okay, Patrick, what, what, anything else that you want on this? Did anybody have any, um, residential type uses that we should have? Rob, did you see anything for that?
We need to, I think when we talk about duplex, we should also talk about vertical duplexes, not just side-by-side duplex.
The only thing about that is, for most of this, you're talking about different properties, and you can have an up and down duplex, and you still have the same property owner. So you don't really have to worry about like setbacks and stuff, cause it's the same property owner. So top and bottom doesn't really affect anyone else, if it's side-by-side, same property owner, top and bottom, same property owner. The, the only thing that would, that we, that would be a concern on that is like a condo. And, now, did you say one time that we, we allow condos in PDE? Is that the only time we allow them?
So condos would fall under the multifamily definition. Or if it was two units, you could probably fall under the, you know, barely attached, depending on how it was laid out. But condos would generally be treated like a, assuming if we're three or more, it'd be treated like apartments. You would just own your units instead of rent.
Then you would have, if you did that, then you, you know, you could have a condo where you'd have top and bottom, and then you would need to have some variation there allowing for something over, I don't know, but, um, but the only time you can have a.